Welcome, everybody. We apologize that we're a few minutes later than our six o'clock start. Today is Monday, March 17th. This is a regular meeting of the Samarfell City Council. I request the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening, so Happy St. Patrick's Day. We appreciate you being here with us this evening, whether you're here in person or watching online. As always, we like to appreciate the city staff at the beginning of the meeting, and I have some very specific thanking this evening. As part of the city's ongoing commitment to recognize employees, city employees are able to nominate their colleagues for both team and individual of the quarter. And last week, I had the honor of partaking in these recognitions as they were recognizing Q4 of 2024. The team of the quarter for 2024 is the Public Works Shop and Equipment Maintenance Team: Gerardo Paredes, James Arieta, and Angel Lopez. We acknowledge their work because those, that high-functioning team, that's the team that keeps the city vehicles and the working, the equipment in working order, which if you think about it, is the backbone of much of the work that the Department of Public Works does every day. So congratulations to the Public Workshop and Equipment Maintenance Team. In addition, we had the employee of Q4 that was recognized last week, and that is Kate Tagaman. She is our Climate Adaptation and Resilience Planner. Kate is leading groundbreaking sea level rise work, and she has raised the bar for sea level rise planning in the region. She integrates social equity and inclusivity in all of her efforts, and we are so fortunate to have her here in the city. Congratulations to all of those individuals for the incredible work they do every single day. I also would like to highlight some recent infrastructure grants that the city staff successfully competed for and won. This is fantastic news, and it's nice to start off our meetings with such good news. As you all know, infrastructure projects are very expensive, and they require outside funding to move forward. So recently, Samarfell has secured over $13 million, $13.65 million, to fund three separate projects. One project is along the Lincoln Avenue between Second and Paloma. The second is a new bicycle and pedestrian path in downtown Samarfell, which is part of that north-south greenway that goes throughout Marin County. And the third project is to create a fully separated shared-use path along the Bellum Boulevard corridor, which will connect the canal to downtown Samarfell and Larkspur. So congratulations to all the city staff. This doesn't happen by magic. It takes a lot of efforts to put together compelling and competitive grant proposals, which staff did, and our community will greatly benefit from these connections for years to come. So, yeah, this is us clapping from the dais. And before we turn to the business portion, we include a land acknowledgement in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on an ongoing basis. We thank the original caretakers of this land. Samarfell is traditionally home to the Kosmewak people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Thank you. We're glad that you're here, and thank you for indulging me a little bit. Actually, it's not indulging. People should know the great things that our city employees are doing. I will now turn to the city clerk to describe how people can participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. For members of the public wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell you live in, or if you're from outside of Centerfell. We do offer closed captioning for this meeting on Zoom. You can select the "Live Transcript" button on Zoom to enable this feature. Community members may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, or if you have any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager for the city manager report.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I wanted to start off by providing some context to the Equity Related Resolution that's on the consent calendar this evening. By passing this resolution, we're messaging to the community that the city is committed to ensuring that all of our residents feel safe and empowered to participate fully in civic life. We all know that we are experiencing a moment in time where our community is facing heightened fear and uncertainty, whether due to social, political, or economic pressures. Our community's richness comes from its diverse perspectives, and trust is built when all voices are heard. This resolution reinforces Samarfell's commitment to transparent and responsive government, and in times of uncertainty and division, we remain steadfast in ensuring the rights and inclusion of all residents. This resolution reinforces the city's commitment to equity, inclusion, justice, and democracy. It also reaffirms those values and demonstrates our unwavering dedication to being a welcoming and inclusive city. I also wanted to remind the community as well that I spoke on this earlier in January, but as a matter of both policy and practice, the Samarfell Police Department does not engage in immigration enforcement activities. And under the current federal law, this means that the police department does not collaborate with federal immigration officials in investigations, interrogations, detentions, or arrests related to immigration status. They do not conduct immigration enforcement actions, and they do not share information regarding immigration status with federal agencies unless required by law. So I also wanted to share some resources. Our nonprofit partners are, we're convening a meeting with them, as well as our school district partners, to discuss how we will, together, collectively support the community in this time of uncertainty. And our local nonprofits are offering various services to support, in particular, the immigrant community right now. So Canal Alliance is providing Know Your Rights workshops and affordable immigration legal services. They are hosting a talk on immigration in Spanish via Zoom on Wednesday, March 26th, from 6:00 to 7:30. And you can get the Zoom information on Canal Alliance's website. There are, being handed out, I think the schools and then the nonprofits have Immigration Know Your Rights red cards. I wanted to mention that those contain information about residents' constitutional rights to help them communicate when and if they're interacting with a federal immigration agent. So it's a double-sided card, Spanish and English. John has got one in his hand as a prop. So you can pick these red cards up at Canal Alliance and Multicultural Center of Marin. And there's also a website. It's Immigration Legal Resources Center's website. You can print them out, which is www-ilrc.org. Next, I wanted to mention that the county's Office of Emergency Operations is updating the Alert Marin system. And so it's an updated system. There, I guess the crossover, the launch of it is on March 31st. It's a new platform that features faster signups, multi-language support, and enhanced reliability. So if you're already enrolled in Alert Marin, you'll be automatically transferred to the new system. If you haven't yet signed up, this is a plug to do so, and visit alertmarin.org. I also had on my comments to appreciate Public Works, and I in particular want to call out Director Miller for her leadership and strategic thinking in going for these grants. It's incredibly impressive. They're very, very competitive, and we're really lucky to have a team that is so successful. Also, just want to mention this week that the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee is meeting in this room on Wednesday, the 19th, at 5:30.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to report out. Vice Mayor Bushy.
I got to do three fun things. First, my favorite meeting of the year, the Public Service Award meeting. It always is very close to my heart because I served with Dick O'Brien, who it's named after on the Planning Commission. So our lips are sealed, but we made our, we made our choice. That was fun. And the Centralman Sanitation Agency Board meeting was routine, although our general manager informed us that the Food to Energy Program, that was the best energy program, best engineering program award for our region, came in second overall in the state. So, super good, super good news there. And finally, I was delighted to join the mayor at the ribbon-cutting for the Burn House last week, kicking off the St. Patrick's season. So, there you go. Happy report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kurtz.
I just have one item to report, which is the E-Bike Subcommittee or Committee that I'm on with the county. Their proposed resolution is going to be going to the Supervisors for Review on the 25th of March. And following that conversation, the jurisdictions will be taking a look at what might be possible in each of the areas.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
I have one meeting to report, and that is the same meeting that Vice Mayor Bushy attended, which is the PSA Selection Committee. So my lips are sealed, and I will use this moment in my privilege to really underscore just how exceptional it is that we were able to secure so much in our infrastructure that is non-trivial, is the opposite, is extraordinary. So again, I will underscore hats off to Public Works, specifically Director Miller for foresight and making certain that our applications are as competitive and well-crafted as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Yes, I'll start by saying congratulations as well. And this, at the beginning of March, I volunteer with Vivalon Meals on Wheels to deliver meals to two seniors in San Rafael, and that was during the Vivalon's March for Meals campaign, raising awareness about critical funding to make sure that our older adults, that they cannot leave their houses. You know, they have enough meals, and also companionship. I had a very good conversation, so it was a lovely program. Also, made with some residents around parking permits. And also, the Sea Level Rise Committee meeting happened in March to plan for the Steering Committee meeting that is going to happen on March 26th. And my highlight, actually, I attended the Civic Well Policymakers Conference last weekend, and we had like over 100 different elected officials from the state of California looking around housing affordability, water sustainability, and sea level rise, wildfire resilience, and infrastructure planning, conversations about the Prop 4 around the climate bond that got actually approved by the voters. And their theme is transforming local vision into action. So I'm really excited about the relationships that I have formed in there, so we can maybe do more, you know, from our city. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just had two additional meetings in addition to the Burn House, which, by the way, had Irish dancers. I haven't been to a ribbon-cutting that had Irish dancers. It was amazing. And what?
And a bagpipe.
And a bagpipe, right. So that was, I think they posted on Instagram. So in addition, I was honored to speak at Drake Terrace. I got some good questions from the residents that were there, as well as the Sun Valley Neighborhood Association. And I want to give a shout out to Kate Anderson, part of Samarfell Fire Department, who showed up in the evening and talked to residents about what they could do for wildfire preparation. So, people want to, people want to know what they can do. So thank you, Kate, for that. Those are our reports from the city manager and the councilmembers. If you'd like to comment, if any members of the public would like to comment on those reports specifically, now is your opportunity. I'll open the public comment. And you are invited, but not required, to say your name and what part of Samarfell you live in.
I just a quick question, that Know Your Rights meeting in Spanish, is that something where it gets translated to English if someone needs that? Just a question.
Thank you. That's a great question. I'll look it up, and we'll follow up with you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the city council member or city manager report?
John Reynolds, I still live in the canal, a condo in the canal. So it's really difficult there with families bunching up in different apartments and renting, and we need to, the Bosas Day Canal and Skoladi and others working and providing affordable housing in the canal, that's a concern. I could come back from Maui. I was with my sister who has Alzheimer's. I'm filling in for that from time to time. But I'm back here, and I'm really concerned. I'm glad that you've been active with the Welcome Center and Canal Community Alliance in supporting immigrants that are law-abiding and working and have families here. That's very helpful, and I see that happening. And we're part of the accompaniment network from Marin Interfaith Council that's getting people housed and supporting them with the red cards and with rapid response and that kind of thing. Maybe not a lot of that has happened here yet. But then I look forward to the Truth Act forum at the Board of Supervisors coming up, I think, March 25th at 5:00. So have people going to that. We need to really protect the people at work that are immigrants here that have not committed crimes, even though they don't have documents. We really need to move on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the reports? Not seeing any. I'm going to close the public comment and move on to the next agenda item. But before we go to the consent calendar, we did have a closed session prior. We had a study session this afternoon, then we had a closed session, and I skipped over having our Assistant City Attorney report out if there's any action, reportable action from that closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that my colleagues would like to hold from the consent agenda? I'm looking to my right, seeing shaking heads. I will pull, I will hold 4D to make, which is Marin Transit Collaboration Agreement. I will make, I want to make some comments on that. But I will accept public comments on the entire consent agenda. So that's 4A all the way through, 4HI. So if you'd like to comment on the consent agenda, now is your opportunity. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to close the public comment. I had asked to pull 4D. It's the Marin Transit Collaboration Agreement. I want to extend heartfelt appreciation to the Marin Transit Board, the Marin Transit General Manager Nancy Wieland, for a willingness to go into, sign a formal agreement with the city of Samarfell around their tent, their project, proposed project at 1075 East Francisco Boulevard. Marin Transit acquired that property, and it is not in alignment with the city's current general plan, adopted general plan. So it was important to the city to have those avenues and those venues for conversation where the community can continue to engage and have a project that not only is a bus parking lot, but hopefully delivers some specific benefits to the community that's there. So thank you to each of the Marin Transit Board members with whom I spoke personally, except for Transit Member Bushy. I did not speak with her directly, nor did I speak with the alternate Yaren Skoladi, but the other ones were all quite receptive. So just wanted to highlight that before I took the vote on the consent calendar. So with that, if there's a motion, I would accept that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. We have a public hearing this evening on the General Plan 2040 Progress Report. And I see Director Hinkle has joined us, and so has Margaret Kavanaugh. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. Micah Hinkle, Community Economic Development Director. I'm actually going to turn this one over to Planning Manager Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch. But really, just on the preface of this, it's just an overview, really, of our annual report, our general plan policies, and our housing progress report. So with that, Margaret, please take away.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I want to do a high-level review of our annual progress report for the year 2024. As you know, government code mandates that local jurisdictions prepare an annual progress report on a status of the city's general plan.
But really, just on the preface of this, it's just an overview, really, of our annual report, our general plan policies, and our housing progress report. So with that, Margaret, please take away.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. I want to give you a high-level review of our annual progress report for the year 2024. As you know, government code mandates that local jurisdictions prepare an annual progress report on a status of the city's general plan and progress towards meeting its share of the regional housing need allocation or arena. A copy of that same report must be sent to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the State Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st. I'm reporting on the calendar year last. About to go through a very high overview of the number of spreadsheets that you had in your packet. I, every year, I want to thank the City Manager's Office and the City Clerk's Office staff for trying to help me format unformatible Excel spreadsheets. So I apologize for the craziness. What I want to do this evening is just give you the overview of the numbers that we've accomplished this year. Table A. All the actual tables are included in the back of the report. But the highlight reel is we had 440 dwellings submitted in calendar year 2024, and 227 of them were entitled. So entitled is planning, permitted is building. So that's the English-to-planning language translation. The balance between 440 and 227 is the 213 dwelling units, which is the project 930 Irwin. That will be coming before the Planning Commission in the next month or two. We are working on the secret documents. So that's a very nice showing of major projects that we saw come in in calendar year 24. Table A2, Annual Building Activity Report Summary. So this is where new construction, entitled, which is that planning, permits, which is the building permits issued, and then completed. That would be a certificate of occupancy or final inspection. I do want to call out, I was so exuberant about Northgate. I listed it as 1,622 dwelling units. I apologize. It is 1,422 dwelling units. I really do apologize about that. What this is showing you, though, is Northgate. Northgate, which the council worked so hard on last year, shows up as a huge win in the entitled column for calendar year 24. In addition, we had a fourplex that finished its map, was entitled with its final map or its tentative map, at 709 C Street. And that's the four there. And the others, there are 34 accessory dwelling units that were entitled and permitted. We actually review them at the building permit stage. Planning doesn't make it a two-step process. We look at it once to try to expedite them. And of the 34 that were entitled and permitted in calendar year 24, three of them have been completed. So it's a process. It's always a little bit harder than it appears in the advertisements or the social media, but they are moving along. I also wanted to note that of the 38 permitted accessory, or the 34 permitted accessory dwelling units, 12 of those are considered low-income and non-dedicated because they are less than 500 square feet. And that's following the rules of the state of California. So whenever you see a garage conversion, not only is it an accessory dwelling unit, it's actually, by its size, considered a low-income unit. And as you learned at the 430 staff council meeting, it matters to have different levels of affordability showing up in our arena numbers. So we're excited to see any version of any option of housing being entitled and permitted in our city. Table B is the really large table in the attachments. It's the regional, it is the arena permitted units issued by affordability. As you can see, we are moving along. I'm very optimistic that a number of the items that you saw entitled in calendar year 24 will be permitted by calendar year 25. But this is how the pipeline works. So our numbers are always presented here. And again, if they don't have a building permit issued that year, they don't show up under the arena numbers. So the number of things that are coming along for this calendar year that we are optimistic will be showing up in our next annual report. Not quite sure what happened to this, but I will just give a highlight. Table D is the Program Implementation Status, part of what we need to be reporting on per government code. Basically, there are over 40 programs identified in the Housing Element to streamline housing development within the city, provide housing protections to vulnerable communities, reduce homelessness, combat discrimination, and increase housing choices. Those are all included in your packet, but I wanted to highlight a few of them. And again, I apologize for the formatting error. Number, first one I wanted to highlight was the Community Service Division was established in the City Manager's Office, as you know. It is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for all residents with a special focus of disadvantaged, historically underserved, and vulnerable populations. The city was awarded a total of $1 million of state and local funds to facilitate the development of a sanctioned camping area along a portion of the Mahan Creek Path, currently serving 65 participants and doing case management, outreach, and other services to help secure permanent housing. They also were able to, in partnership with the County Marin, secure $5,999,241 encampment resolution funding. Again, of the work that your staff does on a daily basis to find funds to support, in this case, the interim shelter along the Mahan Creek encampment area. Let's see. In addition, at 3301 Kerner Boulevard, we are under construction with 40 units of permanent supportive housing. Another project, they received both city and county funding. Code Enforcement inspected 1,364 rental units at 54 properties. I will say, just, I've been here about a year and a half, and I sit very close to the Code Enforcement staff. They are so hardworking and so diligent, and they are so empathetic. As they do their inspections, it's really an honor to be working beside those folks. But that's part of our Housing Element Program 12. And finally, just one more to touch on. Rooted in Marin, which is a really exciting program. The Housing Division staff participated in a community-centered engagement and education process to understand displacement in Marin. The project team heard from communities across the county regarding their experiences and housing concerns through a countywide survey, a community workshop, and focus groups. They also researched and analyzed anti-displacement policies identified during community engagement process and compiled a draft report outlining the community engagement process, feedback they received, and information on relevant policies, including feasibility analysis and case studies from other jurisdictions. The San Rafael staff planned to use this information that was gathered through this process, along with city-specific data and feedback gathered through tenant-housing workshops. The draft report is actually out right now, and the final report will be out just in a few more months. So that's moving along. But another sign of leveraging the money that we do have to look at what's uniquely challenging in Marin County, and then diving deeper into the data to look at what is specific to San Rafael and how we can address it for our city. Finally, the last section of the staff reports contains progress reports, some updates from general plan policies from the Public Works Department, the Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the Fire Department. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2024 and direct staff to present this to California Department of Housing and Community Development with the edit, as I noted in today's staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Planning Manager Kavanaugh Lynch. Appreciate your presentation. I'll first turn to my colleagues for questions that they may have. Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yes, I'm going to ask you a high-level question. Give us the summary. This is your annual report, and I guess this is your first one on the general plan. What are the big surprises? What's going well? What's not going well? The numbers don't look very impressive, to be honest. You know, we're in the single digits of percentages of achievement. So what, are there any new proposals going forward? What are your strategic-level thoughts? I'm, thank you, Councilmember. I'm happy to start that response, and then I will be looking over to Director Hinkle to give you a better, broader overview. There is a very big pipeline of projects that are encircling the City of San Rafael right now. I think how we get to that table, the arena number table, which is the one that we're all holding on to, right, is we need the building permits to be issued. And in order for the building permits to be issued, the development teams have to get their construction financing. So we can provide surety of process. We can be clear in our communication with development teams. And I just want to reflect that the number of entitled units you have is, I think, beyond anything the City of San Rafael has seen. And honestly, in my career, that's a lot of dwelling units that were entitled last year. Like, that's, that maybe, I think that is by far. I know a specific plan in a city I used to work in, and that would have been the total number of things we could have entitled under the secret document. So that's a huge, huge lift, and the council had a big part of that, working on Northgate. The next step is we need the economy to participate, and funding sources have to be made available. And we need to continue to work as close as we can with our development teams as both a regulator and a collaborator to try to get them through the construction financing process into building permit and then out to their certificate of occupancy. Hand it over to Director Hinkle.
Thank you. Just to add on, I think we kind of had this at our work session earlier today about kind of the changing dynamics related to housing development. So I think a lot of these policy adjustments from the state level actually haven't really kind of hit yet, but they are. And it's really reflective of our development pipeline. If you recall, even for Northgate, I mean, that's a process we started really early on. We've had a lot of community engagement input and the process in to kind of get it to the finish line of entitlement, which we did last year, which will show up. But then there is a push, too, about for entitled projects, and I did mention this earlier today, is helping the entitled projects move towards the actual construction, construction permitting, and actually physical building the building. And we're seeing that. I mean, you know, there's a site off of Lincoln, right? We've, you know, I worked on that project 25 years ago. So to see that actually raised out of the ground, I'm like, yes. That's, that's part of that process. And I do think that's part of, you know, our challenge now is to kind of support those projects as they move forward for construction. And really, that's been the charge of the department as we start to review this. But the pipeline is significant, and that really is a change for us. So how do we build the internal processing? You know, reestablish the standard and operating procedures, make sure we have the right staff and the bench depth to actually support the amount of projects that are coming through our doors. And to the point we kind of discussed earlier today was formal applications. You know, the second that the developers select kind of their menu list of what state programs they're participating in for us to be responsive to that. And that's really a combination item that City Attorney's Office, the Community Economic Development, as we kind of move through our Planning Commission and potentially council, depending on the entitlement. But there's a lot of pieces to this. But then, Margaret's totally right, a lot of this really depends on the economy. You know, we are kind of coming out of, we kind of look at the pipeline behind us. Some of those projects were entitled during the COVID errors or pre. So with the time extensions kind of lining up, so the ability to push those entitled projects to construction really is kind of the charge we have right now, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, any questions?
Couple of questions. Based on that, is the state indicating at all that with the arena numbers, that there would be any accommodation recognizing that the economy is challenged based on construction costs and interest rates?
I'm not seeing any indication from that, from HCD. Really, at times, it's, you know, continuing, moving past this. I also think, really, why we even have this type of arena report or the HCD numbers is for the state to actually collect the data. It's also an opportunity for them to analyze a lot of the legislation that was passed to see how effective it was. As much as we want to push projects forward, there still is the market reality because we are relying on private developers actually to build some of these projects to come forward, so.
And have we even, I mean, I think we talked about this a little bit last year. Have we received any additional feedback from the state in terms of if we don't meet arena numbers, what happens?
I have not, I've not had those discussions with the state. A lot of times, it is programmatically, when we do submit our numbers and information, typically, they say, "Thank you." And that's really the end of that. But we're talking about the different arena cycles we have, and I think that's adjustment. But if we look at really our numbers in total, there are improvements. We are making those efforts from this council to staff, to the development community. We are making progress. And there is a backlog of development interest to this community that just has not been met.
And then I have another question, and we emailed a little bit around this, of the different types of projects or programs that are out there to actually expedite from approval to construction. And have you thought of, like, what we might want to consider down the road as possible things, other different types of programs we could implement?
Sure. No, I appreciate that question. There's really two focal areas that the city has targeted as part of the permit streamlining or the efficiencies opportunity. One is an economic development program called the San Rafael GO Program. And that really is led by our economic development team. And that is established, really, as an enhanced customer service program. A lot of it is really, the struggle of sometimes working with the city is that, like, where do I start? Where do I go? How do I, who do I talk to? Where we establish a programmatic approach to actually help get those questions answered. You know, a lot of times for the pre-development or through the development cycles, like, once a project goes through the planning, gets entitled, sometimes there are stalling issues or, like, hey, I need a time extension, or how do I proceed with this? I got a public works question. The approach was to create a program to actually help answer those type of questions, so those developers get exactly what they need. But we established actually a programmatic team that helps answer those questions. So there is that kind of continuity of care through the whole process. The other one is really the investment on our software. We, one of the backbone pieces we have is, you know, it's a 30-year-old software program. So when we talk about efficiencies or opportunity, mobile-enabled, or, you know, how we get, you know, people get information. And also for us to run reports and do a little more data analysis within our own permit activity. We have a, you know, council did approve a contract to actually bring in another software platform called OpenGov. And we're currently in the initial phases of the groundwork for building out that program. But it also gives us an opportunity to really address kind of the systematic approach to this, you know, how it ties into our finance system. How do people make payments? How to make this easier from a user standpoint? And I do want to kind of call out our digital services team, who's actually been leading that effort for us, helping us kind of look at the user-centric focus of, for people, how do we actually make this work a little easier versus the current system we have?
It's helpful to hear. I didn't realize that the GO program was also for developers. I really had thought that that was just for small businesses and business owners. Are developers taking advantage of using the GO program?
Very much so. I feel a lot of our developers, especially on early, like, thoughts or inquiries on the city, a lot of times, we actually do push those developers to our GO program to start. So they kind of hold that space to allow our planners to continue to work through the projects they have. But it allows someone to be responsive to those inquiries and also track the issues, because they're not sometimes just planning. There actually may be county issues. There may be something else beyond that. But at least we can align those resources for getting those answers back to them about what they need to move forward.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll all save the rest for comments, but thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Sculatti.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. So I know that we are centering, like, in housing, which, you know, influences everything else. But I wanted to highlight a couple of other things in the plan. So I guess the first one is around, I know that in the arena numbers, they don't include preservation of current housing. But it is in the Plan 2040. So, and I know that we are talking about goals and objectives for the city right now. But how, what is the progress that we are doing around that, around tenant protections, just to make sure that people are not getting displaced, especially around sea level rise and other climate change items that are happening?
So, you know, not reflected in the arena numbers, but there's a lot of activity that we spend on there, including a lot of engagement, community workshops that our Housing Division has been working towards. One of the requests that council had was a report of our existing anti-displacement policies. So currently, staff actually has been working on providing analysis and details of that that will actually bring back to the Council Homeless and Housing Committee. We anticipate that probably within the next couple of months, if not sooner. But we're currently working on that. Another part of that, too, is also an inquiry about our inclusionary housing requirements. It's another area that we've been focused on and spending resource to provide policy options for council's consideration.
Okay, great. Yeah, because I guess in the study session we had before, we were talking about, right now, we had a 10%. we were talking about, right now, we had a 10% for developers for low-income housing, whether, how is that working? Do we want to increase the percentage or, you know, so? So that will be at the same time?
Yes. Now, they may not be on the same agenda topic, but we are working towards that end, and they may have different tracking. But that is an item that we will be bringing back to the Housing Homeless Subcommittee.
Okay, great. My other question is around the three canopies, the three canopies and around climate change mitigation. I know that we have done, like, currently, like, a study. So when will that be coming to council? And what will be like the next steps around greening more our cities, especially around underserved communities?
Sure. No, I'm going to defer that one to our Public Works Director, April Miller. She's actually been tracking that project on its progress, so.
Hi, Director Miller, Public Works. So, yeah, we're currently working with our asset management software. We did a scan of all of the trees in the city, and we're just working on looking at our inventory, seeing what we need to update, you know, seeing where we need to get arborist reports and working with the community. There's, there is a San Rafael Tree Group who has offered assistance on helping us with some of our data. So that's kind of the next step is we're sorting out our data and figuring out how we can get assistance. I am not sure when it's going to come back to City Council. Right now, there's not really an agenda item, like, in our process to come back to council. I mean, someday in the future, when we do our tree ordinance, that has to come back to City Council, and that's on our list of things to do. So I just don't have a projection of when. It will be in the next three-year goals and objective cycle. So I guess we're a rough timeline.
Okay, thank you. I'll add it to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you for the presentation, Margaret. It was a great summary of what the staff report said, which was very informative. Building on Vice Mayor Bushy's observation of a very slow progress, by my very quick math, when we look even at just the very low row of our progress, we're achieving under 25% of what my algebra math would say we need to be doing year over year. And, and yet, what we heard earlier in our conversation with Niraj Doherty, our outside counsel, who walked us through recent legislation, is that HCD is looking at that and saying, you've met a sufficient amount so that you're not subject to more rigorous, let's say, disposition for, say, SB 35, where a developer can by right be able to build more aggressively. And so I'm curious, do we, it does seem like there is a curve that they're looking at that some jurisdictions are able to achieve, even if, even if it's a modest amount of unit creation and be able to be not subject to more rigorous penalties. Can you describe that more? I know I asked this of Niraj earlier, and she would get back to me. But I don't know if you have a characterization, even if it's not an exact number. It does seem like they are grading on the curve, if you will. Can you, can you maybe comment on that?
Man, this is the last time I let our housing manager go on vacation. So I'll say that right now. So from my perspective, when I look at our RENA numbers and how we're performing, it's also the RENA cycle. Like, there is a window of time, and I think the HCD does recognize within this RENA cycle and number allocations. So I do think we're tracking from the previous cycle, we're tracking in order. But I do think we're going to have to make progress on actual built projects. And that's something that's been outlined from council. It's been outlined for the city management standpoint, also from city staff, is the focus of getting these entitled projects built. And even for our reduction of some of our inclusionary housing requirements, that was a direct, you know, call out of what developers were speaking to us, saying that, hey, we're having a hard time making these projects work. Can you lower your inclusionary housing requirements? Well, we did that, and we still didn't receive projects from that end. So, so still kind of pushing that in to say, at what point does this work out? And a lot of it is, in my opinion, is somewhat out of the local control hands. It really is on the development standpoint, also the market and available capital, construction cost, still, you name it. There's multiple factors that really is kind of limiting where we're San Rafaelers at this time. My hope and my observations of this in terms of just economic cycles is the ability to deliver one project, to actually have it actually financed, built under construction and perform well, will be kind of the catalyst for the rest of the projects to fall. Real estate development and housing development are very following a pack, right? They're like, hey, that developer made money. We're going to go right behind them using the same model. So the ability for the rents to actually come and that developer to move forward and build a successful project, we're looking for that to play out. And I am anticipating it to happen, at least a project to pull building permits this year. So of that nature.
Thank you. And then, just as a nit, I was noticing that in Table D, Program Implementation, just Table D, there were four programs that indicated that it was no action. Would it be, because as I clarified via email, that this didn't mean that we're not going to take action. It just means that it's deferred action until that year actually comes to pass. Is there a way that we could just indicate that? My only, I don't know how HCD is going to, or Housing Community Development is going to read it and say, no action required, or just make sure we're clear to them that we are anticipating action?
That's a great observ, that was a great observation because I read the same thing. I'm like, hey, we're doing so well on so many ends. No action. What happened here? So what they are are future items. So in essence, if you look at the targeted year, some of them are 2025, which we have not completed. So they are targeted tasks. So I do think we can edit those notes to say, you know, targeted task will report out in 2026 for that number. Same goes for the other ones that are even further out years. I also, there was an exchange had earlier. I do think it's also important that we mark progress from year to year. You have to remember, these are multi-year task items. But then sometimes we make good gains, sometimes we have negative gains. So I think it would be good also to note really about how those are doing on a year-to-year basis. So really just more context of really what we're seeing because it really is kind of reflective. Like, if there is no financing market, even though we entitled everything and no one pulls a building permit, we can probably reflect it in some of those notes so there is clarification of really what's happening from our perspective.
Absolutely. And building on that, I think, too, I'll just bring forward an observation that'll turn into a question, which is that I think we're noticing that more and more developers are requesting extensions on their entitlements. And my hope is that, or remember, my question is, is to make certain that we maintain a robust pipeline, that it would seem that staff would be able to continue to provide extensions in order to keep that pipeline as robust as possible.
Yes, we actually do have authority within the municipal code to do those time extensions. And also, I do believe there's some recent state legislation. I think the state's also catching up a little bit, too, about getting automatic time extensions for those projects. They need a little additional time. So we're working through both. And there's a, we have multiple tools to actually answer that. And the one thing I do, we need to be kind of cautious with of how long, right? Some of these projects, you know, the entitlement's over 10 years. I mean, sometimes, and also the conditions and requirements that were placed on some of these projects, they need to be revisited sometimes because even the built environment around them has changed. So really, it is trying to, when we do look at time extensions, we do kind of try to balance that or reflect changes. Well, like, an example of this is Golden Gate Transits and the Transit Center. Like, there's a couple of projects that were entitled before Golden Gate's proposal. So reflecting some of the design changes that will come about that, those need to be captured. So we just actually did that on one of our projects to make sure that they recognize the change in the built environment for Tampa Pius. So because what was entitled isn't what's going to be built because we have newer information.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. So the first one's around ADUs. I see in one of the charts that they've been entitled and permitted but not being completed. So I'm curious if that is additional support? Because ADUs traditionally are done by homeowners. So if it's the county or the city that's providing the ADU support to have them be completed, is the first question. The second part is, I could not recall, and I couldn't tell from the tables, if those count towards our RENA? And how would you put them in the chart in terms of the low income, very low income?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First question. It's very easy, by design, to entitle an ADU. It's, in San Rafael, we make it a building permit. The planners just do a plan check on the building permit, so we go as quickly as possible. It's much harder to build an ADU. And I will tell you that it's, so when you convert a garage, for example, garages are built to store stuff. There is no building code, seismic, energy code. All of that has to kick in when you go from housing your electric vehicle, for example, to housing your grandmother. So that's a very expensive, and it's oftentimes, we are working with, there's a county collaborative, and we have a website, a page on our website that hooks right to them in terms of FAQs and, well, how do, people see the, they see the dream, right? They see this, there's so many things that are installed with accessory dwelling units, right? You can pay for your retirement. You can age in place. You can send your kid to college. On the rent, it's, there's, it's a lot of things that people see when they see ADUs. The devil's in the construction. And helping people understand the pitfalls, helping people understand that they're becoming a landlord. There's a lot to understand on your way to being a successful ADU owner. We are, current, new state law has asked us to produce pre-approved plans, and we're doing that. We are working with others, other cities in our county and our county itself, to give common sense responses to questions for homeowners that are working on this right now. And it's, it's a continuing, we're always trying to do that better. But it's, it's usually more money and always more time than what they thought when they started the process. That's what we, that's the feedback we get over and over.
And so the ones that are being, the three that have been built, so do they count towards RENA? And then also, the follow-up question, do they get the extensions, really building what Councilmember Hill was talking about in terms of the entitled and permitted, given all of the financial considerations?
Absolutely. So once a building permit is issued, you have 180 days to start breaking ground, and that's defined a number of ways. But basically, you know, anything to do with a hammer will vest your building permit. So I'll put it that way. We, I work closely with our building official. I know that he's, if anyone has any reason at all why they need to extend a building permit, he absolutely supports that. It's very clear in the Community and Economic Development Department that we are pro-housing, and we will do anything we can within our reach to make someone successful at adding more housing to our city. And yes, these numbers do show up for our RENA numbers, both above moderate and in the low-income, non-deed restriction category. You'll see some ADU showing up as entitled. It's just how the tables work. Table A shows one thing, and Table A2, yeah, it gets like that.
That's important to note, they count towards.
They do count, and the smaller ones de facto count as low-income, non-deed restricted, which is a category that's harder to hit. And I will say, from my experience being in planning for a few decades, the very low income requires grants from the state. So that's the other aspect of this, is there's grant cycles that our development teams are trying to align with because the amount of subsidy you need to have is something that's almost impossible to bring from our market economy at this time. So it's, there's so many parts and pieces on the distance between an entitlement to a certificate of occupancy.
Well, thank you for that additional information. So moving on to a different type of unit, so senior living units, senior housing. And we are blessed here in San Rafael to have the ages going up, and we have quite a few. And I know there's been an ongoing discussion of how we have those count towards RENA. So I'm under the assumption they still don't, and I would love any insight. It is something that I know we all bring up to our state legislatures. But I'm curious if you've seen, heard of any movement there. So having those units that don't have a full kitchen because they have a congregant shelter internally to have them counted in our RENA numbers.
I think there's been some marked progress on that. And this really came about when we were looking at our 1515 Senior Housing Project entitlement. HCD has actually given some, you know, leeway on what they count as units. So I think we just have to be clear about what that is. I do think it is, it's supporting or working with HCD about that because I think they've recognized that also. Like, it is providing housing to a level. So I still think there's more work to be done on that. But we've seen some indication from HCD or the willingness to actually look at that a little deeper to count those numbers. So now, we've yet to actually move that forward for construction. But I do think from accounting of the units, those are going to, definitely be an argument on our standpoint to work with HCD staff to support that interpretation of really what the, what units count.
So would that be a situation that you would put it into one of these really big charts with a note and hope that they agree with it? Or would you wait until they blessed it? I'm just trying to figure out, we push this because we have so many of these units here. This has been ongoing from the dials.
Absolutely. This year, we only counted the ones with a kitchen because that is the established state law. So of the entitled project for 1515 Fourth Street in the entitlements, I think it's, I shouldn't guess, but it's around 150 some odd units that do have a kitchen. And then there's the ones that you're referring to that memory care type units where they do not. So we are working with HCD to keep pushing them towards it, but that's not in this year's count.
Okay. Well, maybe just think about putting another little line in that big spreadsheet. The very last question, you had mentioned the Rooted in Marin draft report, and it tears off of, or builds on what Councilmember Yurin Gulati was asking. Because in that report, they have quite a few tenant protections and programs. And you said it was a draft. Is there a place where people can comment on that report? Or is it more just a draft because it's going to be finalized by the entities? I'm curious where people could go to find that. When I read it, I was very impressed by the level of detail that we can build on. So I'm just, I want to get more information on that.
I will say that that report's structured, and it's really a city-county with multiple jurisdictional partnerships. I believe it's really up to the cities, like, it's a toolbox opportunity for cities to utilize. I believe it's, I think those comments are open through their website for other input. But then for city staff, as we bring these forward, at least for council consideration or subcommittee consideration, that those would be the opportunities to say, of these various tools, which one would San Rafael like to evaluate?
And just to echo what Director Hinkle just said, it is currently on the Rooted in Marin website. And why I didn't mention it is the comment period ends tomorrow. So you have to rush right home if you wanted to add comments to the draft.
Well, and even if officially the comments end tomorrow, we're always, of course, interested in what the community would have to say about that. If it sounds like we will also adopt a version of that at some point in the future from this, from the dials.
Absolutely, yes. And the next step would be to take the information that they've gained from the county-wide deep dive and then refocus on our city and what may be, from this toolbox, what would really work for San Rafael that wouldn't necessarily be helpful, you know, in other cities?
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor Kate. One thing I wanted to actually call out for RENA numbers in terms of pipeline, like, rough numbers about like what's in the pipeline on development projects, probably around 850 units, so.
Eight fifty?
Eight fifty.
In addition to Northgate, so over and above Northgate.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, you have another question?
I do. As you mentioned, 1515 Fourth Street. So that, and at the beginning, it talks, you haven't, those aren't counted towards RENA because the building permit hasn't been issued yet, but they've been entitled.
Correct. It's an entitled project, yes.
So can you give us sort of a highlight in terms of what's happening right now? In terms, are they working towards the building permits? Or is that not happening? So this is one of those projects that we sort of wonder, right? We went through a lot of work to get that approved. Where is it at today?
Just briefly working through this, it's, they've actually are a participant of our Economic Development Go Program. So we're feeling out the different options that they have. So I think there'll be a point where we'll have a formal application for them or maybe building permits or otherwise, we can report back at that time.
Any other questions? No. Okay, not seeing any other questions. We invite the public to comment on this item with their own comments or questions. So if you would like to comment, public comments now open. Come on down.
I don't know what to say. John Reynolds from the Canal. The percentages and the time, I guess, the 10-year. And having The percentages and the time, I guess, the 10-year and having 1515 Fourth, it wasn't permitted. So it can't be included as a place that we could develop? I don't know. That's what I hear, hearing. We should be positive about the homeless shelters or the transitional housing in the Kerner and, and the former, you know, the other one and other places like Lincoln, you know? I'm not think, I don't think we're part of the Oakmont, Oakwood development. Are we part of that? I'm not sure. I don't think we're part of that. ADUs and renter protections, that's really, it went down in Corder Madara and Fairfax and San Anselmo to increase the possibility of not going up high. So we can readdress that. I'm very concerned, but let's look at the positive, see what we can do. The money didn't come forward in the bond measure, so we're still working on that. I'm going to still work on that. We, we talked to a lot of people, MOC, to move that forward. So the funding is, is going to have to become and that's, we're going to continue to work on that at MOC. So we're going to be in there with you and move it forward. Thank you for doing what you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you for that very thorough presentation, very informative. I just want to reiterate what you were saying about, you know, having all levels, all levels of, of housing that are accessible for all types of incomes and fixed incomes. You know, just thinking about that North Gate project and, you know, me being in a BMR unit below market rate, it's, it's been a wonderful experience, but you know, from what it sounds like, that North Gate project is going to be really expensive for anyone to get into, like top tier kind of, you need top tier kind of expenses compared to other similar projects. So, you know, a BMR unit at a place like that might cost like 400 to 600, $400,000 to $600,000 is my guess, you know, at that time, you know, for a one bedroom or a two bedroom. It's, I don't know how many people who are, you know, living paycheck to paycheck or fixed incomes can afford, you know, 80 grand or 120 grand for, for a down payment. So I just encourage you to, to find creative ways to, to get people into housing. You know, I lived in a garage for years, for a couple of years as an undergrad and, you know, my experience is like, as long as the washer dryer isn't running when I'm in there, you know, that's, that's pretty, it's pretty doable. So, but yeah, so, so that's really key. It's like we got, I don't know if anyone has ever done a study here about how many people actually live on a, on a, you know, live on a per paycheck basis kind of thing. It'd be interesting to hear that. 15% low income threshold, I think that came out at the study session. You know, I would, I would hope that would be a minimum bar in terms of every new housing complex, if I'm saying this right, has a 15% low income. And don't cut down trees, that ordinance or whatever is going to come out, encourage people to keep trees. Otherwise they're going to cut them down. Anything that discourages people, they, they cut it down. It's really important.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Any other comments regarding this agenda item? Not seeing anyone, I will close the public comments and bring it back to my colleagues for additional comments before a motion. Vice Mayor, additional comments on this item? No? Councilmember Kurtz?
I'd like to just echo again, the, we hear about, it's the, from the city's perspective, it's, we hear projects don't make it through because of the cost of the project to the developer to deliver. And I think that's true. I think we hear from the developer side, the, the challenge that the city puts, because we have the permitting and the requirements around that, that's probably true too. So somehow we need to figure out how to move these forward. And, and I'd like us to consider and look at different opportunities that are available in other jurisdictions where we're seeing different programs to encourage building. I have, I mean, there's a lot out there, I have no idea, but I'd love at an opportunity to look at that, even if it's on a pilot basis for a single project. So, because we need to figure out how to get things delivered because I think we have two truths and we're not getting to an answer yet. And we will be back here again and there'll be one or two units or one and two units. And that's just not, and we have the RENA requirements, that's fine. We need housing. We just need housing and we need to figure out how to get there. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, comments?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Margaret and Director Hinkle for your testimony today and answering all of our questions. I want to compliment you, Margaret, specifically. It is very clear that the number of years that you've been focused on helping communities navigate housing is coming through and this council, all staff, and I think our community benefit from her wisdom and experience, which is wide and deep. So I appreciate what you're sharing. And a lot of the nuance of what comes through in your testimony is even just taking a step way back from the legislation and HCD enforcement. What is clear is that even if none of that existed, there are issues in our community around what it would mean if we could push a button and housing could exist for all sorts of personas in our community. When we think about transportation congestion on the, on our rights of way, right of ways and vitality of downtown and other parts of our community, if we could have people live in place and not have to commute in and, and do all the things that have, that exist today, our community would look very different. And while the legislation, I think we would all agree, is imperfect in terms of how it looks in Marin with AMI being so high, I'd like to point out at least a nuance that the, it is not a binary of, even though it looks this way on paper, affordable or not affordable. A lot of the units are affordable by design. So imagine stocked at either studio or single bedroom. While not everybody can say immediately go in, there is a path for many in our community that couldn't otherwise afford what's in our single family stock. That if we had more availability in our downtown area that's dense and affordable by design, we would be in a much better place. So all this is to say that legislation notwithstanding, I think that we're doing the right thing by our community to navigate what is a very tricky thing, whether it's for-profit or nonprofit, it is very, they all have to pencil out. Even, even very low income units must pencil out for the nonprofit. It just has to be the case. So I appreciated your testimony on that, Margaret, that those dollars are very difficult to come by. So while the legislation is imperfect, I believe that we're doing right by our community to make certain that we're trying to find the right places in our community for dense building and making certain that we're trying to achieve balance with the knobs and dials that we have. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurans Gulati?
Yes, thank you so much again for the report. I think there are like a few highlights from, not only from the housing, but also for the Plan 2040. In the, in the housing, I, you know, we have our RENA numbers that we have to meet. So, and that's, I guess, I think all the cities, we are all facing the same thing. But we need housing and I think we need to really be open to current houses that maybe they were built in the 50s, like in the 70s, they need to be remodeled. And I think they can be transformed as a way to open the, the market, the units for housing in our community. We see a lot of people that they are housed. We have the issue with sea level rise that we are going to get the report, I guess, around June. And that potentially has, might displace even more people. So I think we really have to be creative if there are people that they are living, you know, in a house with four bedrooms and, and now they are like empty nesters, what's happening there? Can, can we, I think the JDU, ADU, the state is definitely coming in to tell us how we can expand, expand housing around that. But I would really like to see, and I guess we'll see that in the report when you have it, also the progress that we have on remodels and upgrades. I know that there are great nonprofits like Cana Alliance that is doing a really good job at purchasing buildings and remodeling them, keeping them like low income. And then everything that we can do around tenant protections, just to make sure that people are going to stay housed. We don't want any more people in the streets. Another big goal for me, and I think for our city is again, like our green spaces, in particular the tree canopies around climate change mitigation. It's not just that it's pretty, but it's one of the best ways to sequester carbon. And I think it's a big inequity in our city. And so I would really love to prioritize, and we can talk more about it during the goals and objectives for the city, but I would really like to prioritize this inventory, you know, for one of the tops that we have in the next three years because I think it's really necessary. There is a lot of heat in the summer that's happening and it's, it would really improve our quality of life, not to mention that it can really help maintain the health of our soils to sequester even more carbon. And which takes me to water retention. I would love to also see how we can educate people, the same that we are doing around wildfire. And wildfire is another item that we have to keep the trees in mind, how we can keep safety into place. So I think it's a good opportunity right now around wildfire, tree canopies and water retention to make sure that when it rains, we are capturing as much water as possible and that the new developments for housing will also keep that in mind. So when we have kink tides and storms and sea level rise, you know, we don't get overwhelmed with that. And then I just wanted to mention the role of the county and how they can support our efforts as well, and especially around an inventory of rentals in San Rafael, because I think that would be very helpful for us to get data and get a more accurate, you know, description of where we are right now, our inventory. So yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, thank you, Margaret, and thank you, Director Hinkle. This was a great, great report. And I know we focused on the RENA numbers because HCD really loves these reports. And for those who haven't read the staff report, the snapshot on what was done in General Plan 2040 over 2024 is so readable and it's bullet points, but it really shows the breadth of work both in housing, but also we talk about homelessness, we talk about sustainability, there's, you, you touch on every, almost every single element of the general plan. So I didn't want that to get lost in our very intense conversation around housing, which is important around the RENA numbers. And I was realizing that the housing element was just approved in 2023, so it's, it's brand new. So, so thank you for capturing that information. And this is just such a great document showing that we are making progress. Yes, of course, we'd always want to have it farther than it is, but what I see here is momentum building off of a really good general plan that was approved just in 2021. So thank you. This is a report and I would accept a motion on this item.
I move that we accept the general, the Housing Element Annual Progress Report highlighting progress on the policies and programs identified in the city's general plan and the city's progress towards meeting its share of the regional housing need allocation and direct staff to present the report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
For the mayor, just a quick clarification.
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, go ahead.
Just to make sure we capture that North Gate number adjustment.
Oh, yes, with the, with the correction in the North Gate authorized total.
Second. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Yurans Gulati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. Our next agenda item this evening is an update on the draft Terra Linda Park and Community Center Enhancement Plan. Look forward to learning more. Director Kufa, when you're ready, you can introduce your team and this item.
All right. Good, good, good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. I'm Catherine Kufa, the Library and Recreation Director for the City of San Rafael. And I'm here tonight to introduce the item. It's an update on the Terra Linda Park and Community Center Enhancement Plan. Quite a mouthful of a, of a name. I'm really excited to be providing the update on this project. This is something that grew out of our citywide park and recreation master plan, which was adopted in 2023 by the council. In the master planning process, we identified the need to really put together a future thinking plan around the Terra Linda Park. It was identified as a high priority for a number of reasons. It is our only community park in North San Rafael. And by community park, that's a definition from our General Plan 2040, which is somewhat about size, but also about number of amenities on a site that it serves multiple neighborhoods and the number of visitors it attracts. The Terra Linda Park and Community Center has a community center, an aquatic center, playground, basketball court, and many other recreational amenities, all in 2.9 acres. It is a well-loved and well-used site. The community center was built in the 1950s. The playground was last updated in 1998, so it, it's, it's showing its age. There's a lot of amenities that need to be updated. And at the same time, we're hopefully, based on the, the report we just received, going to be seeing significant growth in North San Rafael. And this is the primary place where our community comes to recreate in the area. With it being a smaller site, we want to be really intentional and really creative about how we design and implement improvements moving forward. So about a year ago, we brought on Gates and Associates to help with the planning process. And I'm here to introduce Melanie Reynolds, who will present kind of what we've been doing over the past year and where we are with the plan.
Thank you, Catherine. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. As Catherine mentioned, I'm Melanie Reynolds with Gates and Associates. We are landscape architects and planners out of Walnut Creek. We have been working with the city as well as Group Four, our architect, you'll hear from Dawn shortly, on this enhancement plan. There are several of my team members who are not here tonight, planners and outreach coordinators and all that good stuff. But we've been working for the last year to really put together what we're going to share with you tonight. Briefly about the project, I know you guys had a pretty big packet about this. We were, we kicked off the project in about March-ish of last year, so it's been about a year, like full 12 months. And we ran two, we run kind of two processes at the same time. There's a planning process, that's really us behind the scenes, looking at what you have, working with staff, talking to stakeholder or, you know, sometimes you guys and other city staff members about what your, what the park is like now, what could, you know, be better about it, what's missing, what's really working. And then at the same time, we run a community engagement piece, and that's where we go out to the community and ask questions, you know, what do you want? What do you like? What do you want to see here? Once again, what's working, you know, what would be awesome to have in this park? And so we have gone through the first three rounds of what we call our planning process and we're now, you can see in the arrow, does it have a thing up right here? We are here, we're kind of in the public review. We've gone out to the community a couple of times and come up with some iterations that we would like to share with you on where we've landed. So in round one and round two of outreach, that happened in summer and fall of 2024, we reached approximately 900 participants, which is amazing. There were two community surveys, three pop-up events at various places, four community meetings, virtual and in person, and then a public meeting as well. And so you can see some of the fun collateral and flyers on here. This picture over here is actually of a dot board from one of our in-person events. And so you can see that the turnout was really great. The community is really invested and interested in this site. And so it was great to hear from them what they'd like to see. So what did we hear, right? Okay. So some key themes that we heard that out of the various events and surveys that we did during round one, play is really big, nature is really important, community gathering opportunities onsite, modernization, Catherine mentioned it, a lot of the things are pretty aging and looking a little tired, comfort and safety, and then flexibility, flexibility and synergy. We just know with such a tight site, it has to really be flexible and kind of, kind of have a little bit of, have to have a little bit of a crystal ball of how people are going to want to use this in the future so that we provide and design spaces that, you know, change with the changing demographics and trends in recreation. So some things that we heard, it's kind of starting over here, the top three favorite existing amenities, what they currently have, the community thought the playground was their, their favorite. Um, the community thought the playground was their um, their favorite. Next was the lawn for informal um, play space, and then trees and plants. This site has an amazing mature tree canopy, and so it's not surprising that the community um, you know, loves it and, and it was a favorite of theirs. Um, some of the top three most desired new amenities. So what would people want to see in this um, new design? Shade structures, I mean, shade is a thing, right? We know it's only getting hotter. Um, informal seating, so we're talking seating other than like picnic tables, um, and then outdoor games. Um, so things they can do outside with small groups and, and kind of stay really social. We also act, asked about recreation programs as we were looking at the building itself. Um, so at the community center, uh, people, their favorite current rec programs are arts and crafts, um, enrichment classes, and then special events. So for round two, we kind of take all the information, we take um, what we learned by visiting the site, what we learned by talking with the staff, um, and then kind of our knowledge of park and recreation planning. And we came up with three concepts that we then went out and presented to the community as part of what we called round two. Um, this first one, you can see um, is a new single-story community center. So in the approximate same location of where your current community center is. Um, an expanded playground, um, that is adjacent to an open lawn area, picnic tables around the playground, um, multipurpose gathering area, it's kind of here adjacent to the community center. Um, a large reservable picnic area, um, adjacent to that, that gather space, a half basketball court, um, and then a central node, which really is just kind of a, the hub of your park. Everything kind of flows out from there. It's, it's like a little bit of an organizing, organizing element. Um, you can see the proposed layout of the building down before or down below. So there's a meeting room, visual and fine arts, um, staff spaces, a conference room, and really what we thought was important, a through lobby, so you can see through into the park. I think anyone who drives by right now, you don't even know really there's a park back there. It's like, oh. So we thought the, the um, visual corridor was really important. Um, the con, the second concept we came up with is a new um, larger building in this L shape. Um, it's an additional 45 to 6,500 square foot with um, indoor and outdoor access. Another um, or a larger playground, roughly in the same area, but a bit expanded. Uh, once again, picnic tables around the playground, um, an expanded open lawn area. Uh, once again, another reservable picnic area. This one is adjacent to the playground. Um, once again, another multipurpose gathering plaza immediately adjacent to the new community center to allow for really that indoor/outdoor access. Um, this kind of central organizing element here, which is very much near, um, as in the other one, the pool entrance, and then a new entry plaza. So this one is really open more to the street and you can really see into the park. Um, and, and everything that is, you know, planned for that. Um, and then you can see a layout with the building, the proposed layout. So there's a meeting room, enrichment, um, health and fitness, and then a visual and fine arts um, room with access to an outdoor yard. Once again, that through lobby, um, and then staff and support space. So the third option is a two-story community center. Um, the second floor would be a library. So the first floor is very much like I just showed you in concept two. Um, a more centralized uh, expanded playground, picnic tables around the playground again, reservable picnic area under those existing trees, um, a half basketball court kind of tucked into this new um, once again plaza area. Um, and then this, once again, another kind of cool tree-lined plaza that really draws you into the park and, and lets you see, um, you know, kind of creates this, this whimsy and this, I want to be there, what's in there, um, when you're kind of driving and walking by. Oh wait, we'll talk about, okay. And then the building, like I said, is the, the first floor is the same as what I just showed in concept two, and then the library is on the second. So what did we hear from that? What, how did people respond? Um, overall, the preferred concept was concept C. We heard people love the library. Um, they loved the um, the openness and the indoor/outdoor and the arts yard. Um, and then we also asked, though, what pieces of the other concepts did you like the best? Because we know that no, no one really likes the whole thing as it is, right? It's like, oh, I like that piece and I like that part of that. So we thought it was really important to understand the parts and, and pieces and amenities of the other designs that people liked. So from concept B, people really liked where the playground was and the size, as well as the picnic area. Um, and then concept C, which is the one that most people preferred, people liked the half basketball court, the gathering area and the plaza, and then the second-story community center, or the two-story community center. So from that, we take all of that information, we kind of go back to the drawing board, chat with your, your staff again, and, and we've come up with this draft concept. Um, it kind of meshes those likes from uh, from both concepts B and C, as those were the most preferred. Um, and you can see we have this uh, 11,500 square foot uh, community center, two-story. Um, we have this really nice central plaza with a basketball court. There's an enlarged uh, play area and then a new informal lawn, um, and then a kind of this new little game area on the side over here, and I'll go through those on the next slide. So if we're looking at the playground, picnic and lawn area, the playground's largely in the same space. We've just increased the footprint a bit um, to provide, you know, more play activities and really maximize the amount of play that can be near and under the trees, so we, we get as much shade as we can. Um, there is a new informal lawn area here, number four. We kind of want to flatten it out, fix it out, maybe get rid of some of those gopher holes and, and things like that, make it a little bit more usable. And then directly under the trees, the existing trees in the middle is the new reservable picnic area. Um, and then over here, plan um, left is a, like a game area. So it's a flattened lawn area. Um, there's a retaining wall because it's a bit sloped over there where people can maybe go play cornhole or, or whatever. Um, they want to do another area for, you know, recreating onsite. Um, this one also, well, if this preferred plan, we kind of looked at how we can make the entry up into the um, aquatics a little, a little more comfortable and, and clear and accessible. So then, um, as far as the plaza gathering and community center, so once again, you can see this L-shaped community center building. There's this really kind of cool um, indoor/outdoor or outdoor arts yard, which Dawn will talk about building in that relationship shortly, a half basketball court and uh, you know, there's a bit of a gr- grade change between these two areas. There's this really cool kind of stepped seat wall between the two that allows you to um, that kind of that informal seating that we heard people want, and also allows for flexibility in events and community events for people to sit. Um, as well as if you want to watch, you know, and hang out while playing basketball. Um, you can see there's kind of this wide access now into the park so that you can see into it. It also allows for emergency vehicle access as well as possibility of food trucks and vendors. Um, and then like I said in the last slide, kind of this reworked uh, accessible entry, kind of up to the next level of the park. With that, Dawn?
Yep. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Dawn Marcus with Group Four Architecture. And so really the program for the building um, is directly derived from what we heard from the community. The highest vote getters or the fine arts, the community celebrations, as well as fitness and exercise and enrichment classrooms. And so those really kind of created the base program for this building, understanding uh, that we want to plan for change, that needs and activities, program services are going to evolve with time. Just like we are not doing what our predecessors, our earlier generations did for recreation. Um, so starting with that, we have this street, um, Delgado Road is along the bottom of our plan. And our first floor is here to the left with the second floor and that kind of ochre color on the right. Um, we have staff kind of central, visible, good eyes on every piece of the building, even being able to see out to the park as well. And that, um, as Melanie explained, having a kind of a transparent lobby, an indoor/outdoor lobby that can also act as a secondary gateway to the park was important. On our left side, we then have a conference room that can be, it, it's the smaller meeting room in this kind of array suite of rooms that we've created here. It can support things happening in lobby. It can support pre-function space in the community room. It can function all on its own as well. Our community room is about 3,000 square feet, is divisible into two, has a catering kitchen to support it as well, and can support um, larger fitness activities, classes in addition to community celebrations, separate programs going on on either side of that. And it can be opened up completely to the plaza so that it can be total indoor/outdoor. You can even get added capacity there. On the right side of the building, behind staff, we have fitness and health space, um, kind of multipurpose fitness room that can be uh, used for all different activities as well. Our core restroom, circulation core, storage spaces, uh, enrichment classroom, again, multipurpose, multi-use room. And then as we go to the top is the fine arts and ceramics room. And really, um, hugely popular program that's happening there, hugely successful, and really trying to create a space that works for that. And so we actually have a kiln room, we actually have a glaze room, we have the outdoor space that can also support additional ceramics as well as storage and programming as well as there. Um, as we go to the stair and go up to the second floor, you can see then that becomes the library. And so the library can be used in conjunction with just the lobby, everything else secured off, so there is independent access possible. And then upstairs, we have another small program room, group study spaces as well as collection, collaboration spaces, and just reading and studying spaces. As we go to the next slide, trying to um, share some of the visuals, kind of the vision for the facility, taught, starting at the top left, that kind of interior-outside kind of integration is kind of what we call the one plus one equals three space, right? You can use the room by itself, you can use the outdoor by itself, and you can use them together and even get added benefits in that community meeting room. Kind of creating that paseo along the side of the building between the aquatics facility, really a great opportunity to activate the park and connect to that with the building as well. And then just a really functional multipurpose room that can be used for all the different things that I just mentioned on the previous slide. Totally flexible is really the key here. And then moving over, you can see the multipurpose health and fitness room as well as a vision for the ceramics room. Even though we're planning for all the ceramics and the functions of the ceramics, still planning for it to be flexible and adjustable as needed. Um, and then lastly, just creating a real presence on the street. You know, driving by this facility, it's, it's kind of the opposite of welcoming at this point. And if you can see into these activities, if you can see what's going on in community centers today, they're really magnets for the communities and they really create that third space that so many of us are looking for today.
Questions or comments?
We'll have both, I'm sure. Yeah. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Dawn. So we'll start with um, questions. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Question. I have two questions, and they're both about things that aren't in your report. So, um, I noticed that the pool in the aquatic complex is not really addressed at all. If I'm recalling correctly, we recently, relatively recently, um, redid it. So I'm deducing that there was a strategic plan to not do anything with the pool area.
Yeah, I think as you rightly called out, the pool was more recently done in comparison to the rest of the facility. Um, we felt that the pool is adequately serving the community need that we have right now. We, of course, are still, I mean, just talking with um, Director Miller about some upgrades to the pool room and the pump room. So we're, we're still continuing to um, you know, to maintain and, and improve that facility. But we felt like the, the footprint, we, we didn't want to come in and build a new pool. That's hugely expensive and probably unnecessary at the moment. We did consider kind of how the pool impacts the rest of the site when you got a hot day, when you've got a big um, swim meet. The pool spills out into the, into the park. And so some of the, those central gathering nodes, the reservable picnic areas, the seating throughout is really intended to support that use of the, of the facility as well. Um, but we did want to just be clear, we're not looking to um, build a new pool at this point. We're really focused on the other areas of the park that are in greater need of, of um, improvement.
Very good. Thank you. The other thing that's missing is in the discussion of the costs of these proposals or where, or the funding, potential funding sources, um, is there a um, another phase?
There is another phase, yeah. So after um, we receive feedback from the council, we're going to go real, refine and really finalize these plans. Um, and in the final stage of the, of this process, it will be working on the cost estimates, the funding strategies. Um, and there's the phasing plan was in there, but we'll be finalizing that as well, kind of part of the same process. Um, so I, you know, I think there's a number of funding sources we're looking at. Um, Mejore is always the first one for a park and recreation facility improvements. Of course, that's not going to be enough to build a new community center, right? Um, I think, you know, one of the, one of the um, things we've been looking at, one of the reasons for this um, study was the planned growth in North San Rafael. Um, and in addition to additional recreational usage, there is also the opportunity for additional development impact fees um, to support park and recreation improvements. So that's another um, funding source we're evaluating and hope to have more information on when we come back.
And what's your level of confidence that there'll be something in the neighborhood of what will be needed to take this, this plan forward?
I, it. Well, we know North Gate's moving forward, which is a large, I think that our hope is there will be funding to support at least a good portion of this project.
Okay.
So where that, and we hope by the time we come back with the final plan to be able to kind of nail that down more, more specifically. But our, um, you know, part of our planning for the park impact fees is to identify what our needs are. Um, and that's one of the things we are doing with this plan.
And when you get to the stage where, the phase where you have the costs, um, is there an ability to prioritize um, based on, once you know the costs of the different elements?
Yes.
And to refine? Okay.
Yes, there will be. So this is, at this point, it's just a conceptual plan. So as we move forward and we have a better sense of funding availability, we'll be able to prioritize the different elements and different phases of the plan and, and how we move them forward.
Yeah, looks like a great concept.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Kurtz, questions?
Thank you. I have probably more comments than questions. Um, on the fa, the last page that has the phases, is that identifying, can you indicate like what phase would go first? Yeah, the timing, not necessarily the timing, but would you recommend like blue goes before yellow or yellow goes before blue? Um, I wasn't clear. I just thought you, maybe it was, not, wasn't sure if those were actually phasing or it could be considered independent projects.
The latter. They could be considered independent projects. And that was one of the things we wanted to be sure to do with this plan, was to identify um, opportunities for improvement at varying cost levels.
That's why you also kind of see the funky dividing lines. So some thought was, went into if this first, how does it not fully impact and, you know, blow up the other area so that now you have to continue, you know, scope creep type of thing? So yes, there was thought put into.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Yuvren Scalati, why don't you go next?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I love the concepts and I'm so happy they went for the concept C because I'm like, I like the C. So I'm very happy to see that. I'm sorry. I just get so excited about parks and green spaces. Um, okay, so my question is around the grass. I see that that is one of the most important things that they have. And I guess, um, just thinking about like, probably once we remodel this park, it's going to stay there for like a few years, like maybe a couple of decades or more. And um, our climate change, um, we are looking into the weather of Santa Barbara as the new weather for San Rafael. So I'm a little bit concerned about the grass. Um, also the Marine Municipal Water District is maybe proposing a ban on decorative grass. Um, so I'm just curious to see um, how much is like, if this is what the community wants, how can we give it to them in a way that maybe is going to require less water? There are some alternatives to that?
Um, well, one thing to consider is that the Terra Linda Park being in North San Rafael, it is already watered by uh, reclaimed water. We do have purple pipe there, so that is um, I would need to confirm the exact regulations, but I do believe there's more flexibility there. Um, and it, this would not be considered a decorative um, lawn. This would be active, similar to our sports fields and things like that.
Okay. So um, so are they, like, did they mention why they wanted to have a grass? Are they going to lay down? Are they going to play soccer?
I think it was a lot of both. So you have a lot of young families, right, who kids are playing on the playground and they run on the lawn. Um, I believe you guys have an informal. Um, I believe you guys have an informal soccer practice happen? No? Well, someone, somewhere, someone, you know, the informal pickup stuff, there's the huge spillover that we were talking about um from the the swim meets. You know, the that lawn area is heavily used by them. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, people just like lawn, right? I mean, so the idea of losing that and and, you know, was was kind of hard. And and if we can find a way to give them that kind of other, you know, active use, um, yeah, people were interested in that.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I'm not a big fan because I think also requires a lot of chemicals to keep it alive and there's not much um life in lawns, you know. But I do understand the community wants something, so maybe there could be some options in there.
Yeah, I mean, if I can speak a little bit to that, there's um, this isn't going to get built tomorrow. And there's changes that happen in lawn and and what we're growing yearly. And there are drought tolerant options um currently that actually would probably do quite well here with a little bit of shade. There's all these things. So I'm hopeful that by the time, you know, construction documents and then we get into implementation, there's uh, there's some really good options for us to consider.
That's great. Thank you. Um, another question on, it's a little bit related to funding, but once we get the number and, you know, I'm sure it'll be. You know, it'll be a number. So I wonder um, there will be the parts that of course our city and our staff has to have to do. But um, is there opportunity maybe through a volunteer coordinator um to engage with the community where they can help? Planting or working on different projects? I know this is a little bit out of the box.
Do you mean during, like during construction or after or after the fact?
Yeah, like depending on what construction it is, one, you know, I mean, obviously, construction has to be done, you know. Um, by professionals and all the liability, but if there is like, once you start like, I don't know, planting or. I'm not sure what alternatives you have in there. If there would be a possibility for the community to be involved.
I don't know about that. I think I'd have to talk with uh Director Miller and and probably our city attorney and. Uh, and our volunteer coordinator. Um, so, but I think it's something we can note and and keep in mind for the future. I know park volunteer opportunities are always really popular.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, there was a lot in the staff report too. My council colleagues answered four of the questions I had. I had seven, so I have three left. For, as I look at the map, taking a big step back and we look at this as a major amenity for Terre Linda and North San Rafael. Is it sufficient for the current population and considering the North Gate, assuming that it all happens over the next ten, twenty years? Um, do we have a sense of amenity as it's used today and what an introduction of net new population would do to the amenity?
I think our hope is yes. Um, you know, if you step back and look at. Development of recreation facilities in San Rafael over the next ten years. We're gonna see significant growth, both hopefully in North San Rafael as well as at our B Street Community Center. So I think when you're looking in totality, we are really gonna be increasing and improving our our rec- our library and recreation amenities for the community as a whole. Um, I think probably when we do, I know in the final plan, we're gonna be looking at kind of like the square foot per capita, what's it currently, what's it gonna be? Um, you know, given the projected growth, at least in North Gate and potentially others, we'll we'll be able to pull some more data on that. Um, I think we felt that we stretched the building size as much as we could, given the site constraints. Um, and that that's really, we weren't comfortable going much farther than that, given the need for out, kind of balancing that indoor-outdoor. Um, and how do we really maximize what we're able to offer on a small site? Um, so.
Totally. I I assume that was the case, but it leads me to my next question, which is um, when I look at just very back of the napkin. Transportation options, say from North Gate to the community center. The fastest way is by bicycle, it's eight minutes, and then by walking half an hour. And then by car, you know, about the same as uh bicycle, which I thought was interesting. But if we look at the pro- parking profile, um, is there any consideration for if we wanted to, say, really inspire and encourage. Cycling as a as a means to get there? Is there a place for bicycle facility uh that we have in mind?
Um, I don't have it shown on the map, but we've been talking about that and there would absolutely be. Um, I know, I think actually in the central node, we show a little like bike fix-it station and and bike racks. So that your bikes aren't sitting on the street and they're in turn for the park and it brings you in and you're now there. So, yeah, I think that's a super big and an important part.
Awesome.
I would also just say that there is public transit within a close walk from the community center as well.
Totally. Yeah, I saw that as as well, that that exists. Um, and then as a final one, this is um more of a question. Um, what can be to either, but when we look at other communities that have. So I I don't even know how to say, because I think we're all very special here. But for the things that people selected and prioritized, that square, I mean, obviously you keep an open mind as you approach community, but. Did it make sense to you what what our community members selected?
Absolutely. Um, play, shade and, you know, uh, indoor-outdoor relationship of a building are what we hear from from everyone. So you guys were very in line, though very unique and special.
We are unique and special.
It is very much what we see in in park planning these days and what community, community needs.
Melanie.
Thank you. I just have a few final questions. So the on parking, and you were, I thought you were gonna ask, ask this Councilmember Hill. So there's this very strange, small parking spot that's to the right of the building as you're looking at it. So I was curious if that was talked about to remove that in order to enhance the space or is parking so dire? I mean, if we're gonna have enhanced biking, then again, might get people out of the car, but that was one thing that really struck me. It's such a strange lot, like you just don't want to hit the fence behind you or each other. I was curious about that.
I think from an access perspective, the other parking lot is quite far away for anyone who might have mobility issues. And we do have large senior programming at the site, so um, that is a heavily utilized lot. It is the preferred lot for people to park at that community center. So um. Yeah, and that is the ADA path of travel for the building and to get into the park. So I think um. Removing, especially in the summer, when you've got the pool going and everything, parking is quite impacted at the site. And if we're expect expecting enhanced usage, um, I think it is important to keep.
Great. Thank you. So I had questions around the library and it really does dovetail to the financial considerations. That um would be required to have a whole second story. I'm curious from that size of library, we have pop-up, we have a pop-up library downtown. We have a smaller library out of the Alborro Center, so I'm curious if there was an ability to have a library or to have. A pop-up so smaller square footage that still meets the basic needs on a single-story building.
So you're saying if we, if to incorporate the library into the first floor? You know, I think as Melanie, as we've kind of mentioned, this is where at the conceptual design stage. Um, as we move forward and we do have a better sense of funding availability and where different funding pools for this project might come from. I think that is something we could evaluate.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, so our initial thought for the library funding portion of this, um, measure P. If there is sufficient funds to implement the um Albert Park Library and Community Center. It does articulate that those funds can be used for branch library infrastructure improvements as well. So that is, um, you know, it will take us time to figure out if we've got the budget for the the main project that measure P envisions. But that is something we'll be um looking at as well. So I think that is an option. Um, the preferred option, given that the um, the community's looking for expanded community center space. Um, it would be the second story if we can make it work.
Hundred percent, I understand that. When you don't have dollar signs or the realities of constructing, um, you're gonna have the big dream. So I, so I'm trying to 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 kind of recognize that and see if we can have a both and. I do know the pop-up library at North Gate's been successful, you know, probably more so than I thought it would be, given that Marin County has a library there. So I'm interested, but I'm just trying to figure out. Yes, you wanted to add something else.
I was just gonna add that this this proposed second floor is not much bigger than the pop-up at North Gate.
Okay, but it is bigger than the one at Pickleweed or Alborro Center.
Yes.
Yes, because that one's pretty petite. I also, and this might be a question, and maybe this is too far in the future, but of course, when we think about more amenities, we need staff to staff those amenities. So if in the perfect world, the money all comes down and we have another library here, do additional staffing? Are we gonna have to increase our employee headcount in order to staff this?
I think I'm probably not quite ready to answer that question at the, at this moment.
And you don't have to answer it, but I, but I want that as a comment. So because it's not just the facility, there are ongoing costs after it's been built.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mayor Kate, I'll just chime in on that briefly. I think it is um something that we would have to consider. In in bringing it forward, that um, the ongoing costs of that operation are significant. I would expect we would probably have to increase staffing, although Catherine's right, it's like, it's too premature at this point. But I think that's with um, you know, consideration for this type of asset at that location is it's got some. Um, challenging aspects to it. And to your point, the staffing is one of them.
I I think what I'm getting at is if the library is the straw that breaks the entire camel's back, I mean, that's the kind of information I think the the council would want to know when we hear the next iteration. You're saying if we remove the library as much as it's beloved and desired, but then it sinks the whole project, that to me is a really important information to give the council the next round. And then.
Just to respond to that, you know, I think we are intentionally um approaching the final product with the library with the second story as an optional. Kind of element. And so we're gathering the information on on how we could uh move forward either way.
Okay.
So we would have that as we, and I I think a lot of this, again, is it's gonna take us years to figure out. How it, how, how it moves forward.
And that goes to my next and last question, because it does take years. So everyone's done the planning, they're all excited, they're ready for the groundbreaking to be tomorrow. Um, so on the different building, what Councilmember Kurtz was asking, the different phases, has the community specifically weighed in? Because we're gonna have to prioritize, most likely, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of how one phase doesn't interrupt the use of the other phase. So, or maybe the the question is, can, will the community be able to weigh in? Because for us to prioritize doesn't make as much sense as the community saying, hey, these are the trade-offs.
Um, we haven't specifically asked the community, which phase would you like to see happening first? But we did ask them which are their most important amenities. So, for example, in the yellow phase, that's where you'd get the expanded playground. You'd get the lawn and the reservable picnic area. So I would say that would rank ver- in in terms of. The the pla- the park amenity improvements, that would probably come first. Um, and then again, a lot of it will be dependent on on funding availability and when funds are available.
Well, that makes sense too, because there's almost a more immediate benefit to the community, right? Um, rather than buildings which take, have a much longer timeframe. So that's.
Yeah.
No, I just think this work, I know we're not to comment yet, but I think this work is really tremendous and really well laid out, because there's a lot of information here. So there might be additional questions that come out from the public, so I will turn to the public if you'd like to comment on this item now is your opportunity. And you're invited but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
So this park, is this, is this where the pool is by Scotty's Mar- okay. Yeah, that is a, that is a very hidden park. Uh, people who do know about that, wow, it it's. It's like you got your own private place here. I'm just wondering about accessibility, accessibility for. I don't know, is this the proper term, the intellectually disabled? You know, I hear McGinnis Park, they're gonna get a park that's suitable or addresses, you know, people who are autistic. People of all sizes who are autistic. And so I'm wondering, you know, what this park does or do people, or people are just expected to. Basically drive, you know, to McGinnis Park or, you know, maybe take the smart pathway. But um, the basketball court as a basketball person with broken knees, it's. You know, that half basketball court, if you want people to use it, I would, I would make it enticing. Glass, glass backboard, put, you know, that white square for the backboard, full-size backboard. You know, you you see a lot of parks where they have this small backboard, you're trying to use the backboard, you can't, right? Um, if the ball is bouncing and it hits the grass, that's a dud. So I I would say a full-size half-court where there's an out-of-bounds line and and there's still uh more asphalt or whatever beyond that. A chain net, you know, if there's no net, no one wants to shoot there. So a chain net, I think, is good. Uh, the building, I am concerned, just, I just don't, I just can't envision kids going outside. Whether it be now or in the future. So this building, it sounds like, I don't know, it's not there or or whatever, but. Kid, kids may just gravitate, gravitate towards going inside and doing those indoor activities. I like the idea of of a soccer field, full-size basketball court. We don't need more indoor activities.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to comment on this item?
Hello, I'm uh Michael Norton Lindsay from Terre Linda. This is actually near my house and I've spent a lot of time there. Um, uh, one sort of comment and another comment that may lead to to a question. The, um, I just sort of became aware of the rental rates for that space and I would hate for them to go up. Like, it would be great if the community felt like they could actually afford to rent the space to run events. Um, uh, and not be priced out of it. Um, uh, so sort of keeping those rental rates affordable. You know, if it's a big shiny new building and nobody feels like they can, you know, actually use it, that would be a shame. Um, uh, I also recently became aware of the shop, I think in Novato is sort of attached to the library there. It's a, like a maker space or a, you know, repair shop. And I was wondering if uh that had been considered. Like, I know there's a lot of kids there that would work on stuff in there and it's a great place for people to kind of meet and fix things and, you know, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Not seen any enclosed public comment, so there's a question about accessibility, just in general. Uh, a comment about rental fees, I don't think we can probably weigh in on what the rental fees are gonna be of that building. And then uh the idea of a maker space, whether that was considered.
Um, I think in terms of inclusive play, um, for a community park like this. Um, I would expect that we would be striving for a very all-inclusive um play space. Um, that would be welcoming to children of all abilities and would have intentional design with elements for um for that. Um, as for the maker space, I, Dawn, do you remember, I mean, we, we asked the community about a whole range of different things they would like to see. And I don't believe that maker space um ranked highly. Um.
Actually, yep, you could just speak in the mic. And that's fine, maybe it's just saying it didn't rank from what you heard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that specific question was actually even vetted with the community. But this is very concept plan. And so even by the time you come to program this in two to three years, trends will change. And so it would be perfect time, as you're doing the program for this building, to go back to the community and refine the program for the library and the community center.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would, I'll just, one additional um thought there is that, as Dawn said, as we move forward with this and go into um deeper design. We would be vetting that. We would also be considering, as we move forward with the Albert Park Library and Community Center, what, how will, how we're programming that building? And how they can complement versus having the same program, programmatic elements at each building. So it might be a thing where Terre Linda is really more focused on the fine art ceramics, because we have such a well-established program there. And at Albert Park, we have a maker space and other creative options.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any final comments, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks for the great update. Um, you've clearly done thorough outreach um and developed a very thoughtful plan that is very attractive. Um, and so I look forward to the the next hard work, um, figuring out um how we could finance it and um actually bring it forward. Um, it will be, it will be great. I have one additional request. I didn't realize that you had access to recycled water there. Have you considered um dual plumbing the um building with recycled water for the toilets?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you Director Kufa, Melanie and Dawn for being here tonight to provide the readout. One year since it kicked off, this is a culmination of some great work. Carrying forward some of the comments that the Vice Mayor just shared. This is a great example of community outreach, thoughtful way to diverge before you converge. So thank you for taking the time to do that. And like the Vice Mayor said, I think we're all going to be interested in what the path is to funding this, this marvelous notion of what, what could be done with this space. And again, indicating what the Vice Mayor said, it is really wonderful that we can take advantage of recycled water here that it does provide for, I think longevity for the lawns. And looking forward to this coming to fruition. So thank you for this update for the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Yurinskaladi.
Yes, I echo the sentiment, very well done. I look forward to hearing back about the funding. I think sharing it with the community on different options, like the library is going to be this, you know, I think it's helpful for the community to, excuse me, sorry. Sorry about that. Maybe for the community to be involved in making decisions as well, because, or at least in priorities. I think this is a great opportunity for nature and maybe have like a demo area with pollinators where people, homeowners can actually see some of the options that they might want to consider for their homes. Also, again, like the lawn, I'm glad that you might be looking for some alternatives or at least like try to reduce the surface of the, of the lawn in combination with other native plants. I think it'll be really nice and trees, of course. I have always thought that our rentals for any property that we have, that we are very generous with the non-residents. And so maybe a consideration could be like our rents stay in our range, that we have looked into it, but maybe for the non-residents. And I know that this is not particularly for this specific project, but maybe for non-residents, it is a higher rate, you know, that can help the residents to with that. And then the last one that I almost forgot is that public art. Maybe this is a great space for public art that the community can participate. So thank you so much, great project.
Thank you, and Councilmember Kurtz in District Four, we'd love to hear your comments.
Community is super excited. They all, as Mayor Kate said, they, when is it going to be done? That's always the question. So thank you, thank you, and thank you for the amount of outreach you did. With me specifically, as well as with the entire community, it was really valuable. I think if I remember correctly, one of the questions was, what do you think about the, the performance space? And most of us said, what performance space? So we didn't even know that there was a performance space there, which was really interesting. And I've also heard that people now have actually gone to the park because they didn't realize what the park had to offer, has to offer today and thinking about it for the future. So thank you for doing that. It serves a large community and a large, just wide area for a park, for a community park. Many of, from Terra Linda, Saffretus to Lucas Valley heading north, many of those families go to Marinwood. And even though if physically it's closer, we're not considered Marinwood and we pay the non-resident fee to use Marinwood. And so people are actually really excited about the idea of being able to use the Terra Linda Park more. So thank you, we're looking forward to it and anything we can do to help will be appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I'll just add in, great report. It's always nice to enable people to dream and to envision. And then we get the, now you have the harder task of reality. But I know that Councilmember Kurtz will stay involved in this going forward. And thank you, thank you, Melanie, thank you, Dawn for being here, thank you, Director Kufa. I would invite Councilmember Kurtz to make a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to accept the report with a big thank you.
Does she need to read?
Yeah, if you could read the.
So the update.
I just have recommended action, accept the report.
Say the draft Terra Linda Park and Community Center Patreon Plan.
Update the recommendation, update on the draft Terra Linda Park and Community Center enhancement plan.
Thank you.
Accept the report.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yurinskaladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you. Wow, you guys did that quickly, we were still working through this one. So the final item on our business meeting tonight is the Canal Neighborhood Active Transportation Enhancement Project. I see Director Miller and Associate Civil Engineer.
Hello, thank you, Mayor Kate, Councilmembers. My name is Gray Melgaard, I'm an Associate Civil Engineer with the Department of Public Works here at the City of San Rafael. I'm also the Canal Neighborhood Active Transportation Enhancement Project Manager here tonight to give an informational presentation, a little bit of project history, a little bit of project overview, some budget and some next steps timeline for the project. So a little bit of project history, so the project is kind of a conglomerate of a number of city planning documents. One of them being the Canal Community Based Transportation Plan, which identified the need for pedestrian, bicycle and transit upgrades in the Canal Neighborhood. Also included is the Citywide Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, which looked at some of the bicycle boulevard needs on some key streets. And in 2022, there were a couple of lighting workshop, excuse me, lighting workshops that were held with Minnican, Voices the Canal, City of San Rafael and Canal Alliance for some of the proposed lighting improvements. So a little bit of a project overview, three kind of main components, pedestrian, bicycle and transit. In terms of pedestrian, curb ramp upgrades, sidewalk gap closures, some lighting improvements and some of, and some enhancements to uncontrolled crosswalks along 19 streets and pathways. Bicycle, we're looking at bicycle boulevard treatments along three of those key streets and some new secure bicycle parking at Pickleweed. Transit, we're looking at enhancements for five shelters at high rider shop, ridership stops as well as a additional stop along a high use transit route. This is just a bird's eye view of the project, so the project limits are outlined there in red. All the different elements we just talked about are kind of identified on this map. This map, as well as the presentation, will be available on the project's website. So anyone who wants to kind of go in and do a deeper dive is welcome to. This little more project overview, so just kind of a rendering of existing versus possibility. So this is from BKF Engineers, this is Louis Street. So one of those sidewalk gap closure opportunities for what the roadway might look like post project. And again, this is all available if people want to give it another look. So BKF Engineers was selected as the design consultant after a competitive proposal process with the city. So we have BKF, we also have a team of sub consultants on the project. So environmental, traffic and geotechnical, as well as an outreach community liaison in the form of plan to place. Talking about budget, so the city was included in the fiscal year 2425 Capital Improvements Program. This is that screenshot for the project. The project has received an active transportation program grant as part of Cycle Six. That grant amount is about $4.1 million. And then we have the matching, the local match for that. In total, project cost estimate is right around the 6.7 mark. Though that is a very kind of flexible number at this point, while we're in the early stages of project development. Project timeline, next steps. So right now, we're in the planning, environmental and outreach phase of the project, so 2025. Design and outreach will start slash continue into 2026. And then construction, looking at sometime in the 2027, 2028 mark. And the big old asterisk on that construction, its staff is currently engaging with PG&E on a corresponding Rule 20A project that's within the project vicinity. So making sure that those projects are aligned and brought together cooperatively. That is my very short and sweet presentation. Happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Excellent presentation, especially with a great staff report. So thank you, Gray, we appreciate that. I'll look at my colleagues for any additional questions, Vice Mayor.
Yes, earlier in tonight's meeting, the mayor discussed the agreement with Marin Transit. I wonder if you're working with them on coordinating the transit stops and all that they haven't planned for, for that area, including their new building.
Yep, so definitely early phases of the project right now, but coordination with Marin Transit for those stops and the new location, definitely part of the process with them.
Okay, and I, I just have to ask, a $1.2 million design contract? Doesn't that seem like a lot?
So the, the design contract with BKF is actually the environmental, the design through construction support. So it's kind of a conglomerate, so maybe a three, four year process with them.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the, the, so there, there's a lot of engineering work that's going into this. It's not just the basic design.
Yeah, I mean, design contracts are typically 25% of the construction or the total cost of the project. So if you look at it in that sense, sometimes it's 30%. So we're probably going to have a construction manager too, so that'll be the little bit of extra out of a, you know, 6.7 million, 1.2 is, if you look at it in that sense, it's in ballpark.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz, questions? Councilmember Hill, questions?
Yes, along the lines of dollars. How did you arrive at the 6.7? What is your level of confidence? Because I saw on the staff report, it reads, city has committed additional funding to augment the design and construction budget for the project. So I assume that there's some amount of contingency or fudge factor that needs to be considered. What are some of the considerations for why it might not land on 6.7?
Yeah, that actual grant application with our city match is closer to 5.5 million, but we weren't sure at the time of the CIP whether or not we were going to have staff to complete this project. So we added in a buffer for more staff augmentation, like a project manager or, you know, scope creep and stuff. So there's a pretty large buffer in the current appropriated amount for the project. So that's why Gray mentioned it's, we'll, we'll kind of see it's about 6.7, but it could go all the way down to like 5.2, so.
Gotcha. And I think our collective experience, we seldom see projects go down, but I appreciate that there's hope for that. And then attached to that, and Gray, I could read in your body language, it came through. Can you share a little bit more about the, what are some of the factors in the PG&E undergrounding coordination? What would, why does it have to be so well timed?
So cooperatively working with PG&E, we're aiming to try to get the project into their work plan at the start of next year, basically. And so their planning process for their design, their outreach, their coordination and construction is a factor in how our project progresses, specifically because the areas of impact for the undergrounding district kind of directly fall within the path of some of the areas of this project.
Is there anything that this council can do to help to inspire PG&E to be more cooperative?
They are being very, we are working very closely with them, they are being very cooperative and they've been very helpful. They have our dates in their work plan. So they are very aware of this project and what it means to our community and working with us to, to make sure it progresses appropriately.
Great, we can remind them that we are paying ratepayers, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add, when we brought the undergrounding district to the, to the city council last year, it was like an eight to 10 year timeline. So PG&E is very aware of our project and the fact that we have grant funds that need to be spent by a certain amount. They're really trying to work with us to expedite their schedule and get us on their, on the timeline sooner than that eight to 10 year mark. So three years would be amazing.
It'd be great for them to have a headline that they did something really wonderful in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Yurinskaladi.
Thank you, and I actually had the same questions around PG&E, a little bit concerned about that our project is pending on their project, but, but yeah, thank you. We are hoping, right? And, and I guess my question related to that also is around sea level rise. And we know that we're going to have some, we are going to have to do some work around sea level rise. So I don't know if PG&E is looking into that, especially because they are going to be digging when we are sinking, you know, and then how we are going to keep the project in mind or we're just going to kind of like build it and go for the best.
So this project is really, I'm just going to call it a maintenance project. We're replacing curb ramps, we're matching existing on either side, on the sidewalks. We're doing striping, we're doing some lighting. Nothing we're doing is really, we could substantially change to help with sea level rise. So I guess in that sense, we're not, I guess, not considering it because we're not doing massive improvements. I know 6.7 million sounds like a ton of money, but it's really not that much infrastructure that we are, are working on. I mean, PG&E is aware that we have a high water table in the area. So while they're designing the undergrounding project, they're going to have to consider that in their design. I know some of the hurdles that they, they deal with when they're designing projects. So hopefully, you know, that doesn't hold things up too much. So in that sense, they're going to be looking at sea level rise.
Okay, great. The other question I had is around the bike lane. Well, not bike lane, bike lane would be nice to have a bike lane. But I understand that in the canal, a lot of people are actually biking on the sidewalks because they don't feel that the roads are safe. So I don't know if there is an opportunity, and also I know that is a huge problem with parking. So how would that work with the, the bike access? Or is it possible, I imagine it's not possible to create like a bike lane or, or something like that?
Yeah, so what's in the citywide bike and ped plan is actually a bike boulevard. So it's enhanced striping, it's, you know, helping with narrowing of lanes, traffic calming to really make it more bike friendly. So it's not an official bike path, but it's ways to help encourage people to ride their bike because car, we're, we're making cars go slower. So that's, that's how we, I guess, make it safer. If people are driving slower, people are more likely to ride in the street.
Yeah, okay. And then I guess my last, my last question is around community engagement. It's great that there has been so much community engagement and this is the plan that you have come up with, which is wonderful. Will, are we going to communicate with the community to say, okay, here it is, this is the plan? Or what is the communication plan that we have for the community?
Yeah, there'll be some communication on, here's the plan. I mean, the ATP grants are very specific, you have to do conceptual drawings to show this is exactly what we're doing. So there's not a lot of flexibility in that aspect. But I'd say a large portion, portion of the outreach will probably be on lighting because part of the grant is proposing to do lighting on a long stark weather path. And so that, we need to do some sort of outreach component there to discuss with the community to see if that's something that they want. We, we did hear a huge out, there was a huge outreach done for lighting and people wanted it, but there's definitely part of the community who does not want lighting there. So there will be more outreach specifically focused on the type of lighting and what, what lighting we would propose. And, you know, how does that change with our, the hours that the park operates right now? Because the sunrise is sunset, and so there'll be more discussions on that. I'd say that's the larger portion of outreach for this project.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I just have one follow up question. I know when you were engaging or putting out the RFP for this, you referenced the Canal Transportation Plan to find the site. Did we look at any of the safe routes to school plans that have been done? I don't know how active Safe Routes is there, but I'm hoping that this prioritization, that they've been able to weigh in or they're, we have information from them.
This, this grant was a very long time ago.
Oh, was?
I think, I think it was like 2021.
Oh, that's fair, okay.
So I'm not sure if we did, there's different, we've had turnover since. There's improvements near the schools, so.
Okay, so maybe it's turning it around and, and letting the school community know the improvements that have been applied for and are now being received.
Correct, and one of our consultants that's on the project parametrics, they're, they work with Safe Routes to Schools. So we'll talk to them about different striping options or things that are already involved in the project to see how we could do any kind of improvements.
That would be fantastic, great, thank you, Gray, thank you, Director. I will open up the public comment on this item, not seeing any other questions from the council. So if you're interested in providing your thoughts or questions, please share your name and where you live. You're not required to.
I live in the canal, in the condominium there, but I spent a lot.
But I spend a lot of time in Maui. I don't get out too much in the canal, but I, I experienced the sea level rise with these atmospheric rivers. The water table is very low, you know, and that's a concern I have. And making sure that we adequately have infrastructure that will prevent the water from rising into our condominiums, that's, that's a question I have. Parking too. And also the Volzes Day Canal and others that live in the canal need to have a very strong input, making the decisions about how we proceed with this. And I, I would really want that to be part of this, this movement for the enhancement of the traffic in the canal. You focused on spinner point before. One thought, and I don't know whether the Volzes Day Canal support this or not, but, you know, parking garage for trucks that people are using construction, you know? I don't know. Some way relieving the parking congestion, and we've worked on that before, but we need to work on it some more. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with him. You know, usually the, the canal, they're here in force, right? So it's shocking that they're not here. Maybe they weren't notified or whatever. But I, I would imagine they'll chime in and do what they do best. So. I do wonder if there is a way to get a bike lane. You know, I even looked into that kind of stuff in other places. And, you know, you could have two-way traffic, just one travel lane and two-way traffic or one-way, one-way, you know, one-way traffic. But, but the interesting idea, you know, in terms of, you know, I'm all for slowing down cars, but you have this, I guess you have this, if I understand this correctly, you have one basically lane and that's being used by, you know, two-way traffic. And one, if there's two cars going by each other, one's going to have to pull over kind of thing. I, I do wonder if that's possible. You know, the canal is a goldmine, right? It's like, it's, it's surrounded by water, which is maybe good and bad, but it's very beautiful. And, you know, this, this will ultimately get people out. But if people don't feel safe on those roads, if you got parked cars and if it's narrow and there's not a lot of space for those cars to pass and you got two bikes and you got two cars, you got four things going on all at the same time. You know, I never want to be in that situation and see what happens. My guess is people do probab, I mean, parking is so hard out there. But my guess is people still get into their car and, you know, maybe drive down the street. I don't know, Pickleweed or, or whatnot. I don't know this area perfectly. I think this project has a great job to take down that barrier of people just driving around and getting people out of their cars. Great job so far.
Thank you. Any other comments? Not seen any. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for any closing comments on this, awarding this public professional services agreement. Additional comments, Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll just say that it's great to see this move forward. I mean, the plan was in 2022. And in that plan, it referenced the Community-Based Transportation Plan of 2006. And at that time, it stated, a lot of these items are still these items and need to be done. And here we are in 2025. So now we're actually moving it forward. So this is just, this is the approval for the engineer now to do that work. So I'm glad we're moving it forward. And I would also just say, as a general, I mean, in reading the plan and the work that went into that plan, and it referenced all the neighborhood community studies that have already been done, we have a lot of data. We have a lot of literature that we don't need to recreate that wheel again until we start getting some work done. And so this is that step to get that work done. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Gray and Director Miller for the presentation and taking our questions. I'm going to make comments, but I want to confirm, is this actually in our CIP? Or is this a separate thing altogether?
It, it was in our, it was in our CIP and approved in the fiscal year 2425 budget.
Yeah. I'll just echo then Councilmember Kurtz's, Kurtz's notion, which is that it is always exciting to watch something that has been in our CIP moving year, inching forward that this one came to fruition in the time that we had envisioned as we came across in several years ago. So thank you for updating us on where we are and look forward to the next couple of years as it comes to fruition.
Thank you. Councilmember Yerem Skoladi.
Yes. And again, thank you so much for the great report. You touched on everything that we needed to know. So that's wonderful. I, I'm, will keep my fingers crossed that everything is going to go well with PG&E. So we can actually, because I, I would hate for our project to be delayed because of that. And then, yeah, whatever we can do around the, the bike access and looking at, you know, sidewalks and parking and to make it safer. I know that the city has been going through so many community meetings about this project. So I, I agree that we, we have done a really good job with that. So it's more like notifying the community when it's going to happen to make sure everybody's aware because this will be, this will have a big impact. And I'm sure PG&E will be doing a lot of communications too. So maybe we can tag along that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Gray, for the great report. Thank you, Director Miller. It, BKF looks like a good firm to be going with and it's them and the other teams that will support. So this looks like the right people to get it done and it's nice to have something actually done, moving from paper into the real world. So thank you. I would invite Councilmember Yerem Skoladi to make a motion on this item.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with BKF Engineers to provide design and environmental services for the Canal Neighborhood Active Transportation Enhancement Project in the amount not to exceed 1.264,034.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yerem Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. Before we adjourn, we have open time for public expression. This is any comments from the public on anything not on tonight's agenda. You're welcome to express those sentiments now. Not seen anyone racing down to the microphone. Appreciate you all for a great meeting and this meeting is adjourned.